Good evening and welcome to the January 11th, 2021 meeting of the Wakefield Town Council. Calling the meeting to order right now, and I would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Madam Chair, we don't have a flag this evening.
We don't have a flag, okay, so we can all imagine that we know what the flag looks like. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I see that all the councilors are present for attendance. Moving to item number four, we have no one who's signed in for public engagement, but is anyone on the meeting want to take part in public engagement? Okay, seeing none, I will move on to item number five, which is always really nice. We are here for item number five to do business recognition for some outstanding businesses in our community. Batten Brothers and Carol's Cafe both received recognition and awards at the 17th Annual Mass Econ event for their assistance in combating COVID-19 and for being just wonderful community partners. Steve, I'd like to put it over to you to say something, please.
Sure, this is real to highlight any of our businesses and particularly in this context. So at the end of November, more than 160 leaders from communities across Massachusetts virtually joined Mass Econ for the 17th Annual Team Massachusetts Economic Impact Awards, celebrating 2020's Massachusetts corporate heroes. Mass Econ is the state's private sector partner reporting Massachusetts as the premier choice for business growth. For the last 16 years, Mass Econ has been honoring employees that have grown en masse with facility expansions, financial investments, increased employment, and community engagement as a part of their economic impact. This year, the awards reflected the spirit of Massachusetts businesses to solve problems, serve their communities, and provide for their livelihoods of their workers in the midst of this public health and economic crisis. Town of Wakefield was proud to have two local companies be nominated for awards at this event, both Batten Brothers and Carol's Cafe. Narrowed down for more than 30 nominations, Batten Brothers ended up winning the Northeast Region 2020 Corporate Hero Award. And tonight, we do have Richard Batten, the president of Batten Brothers, on the line. Batten Brothers is located at 893 Main Street in Wakefield, was founded in 1947. Batten Brothers specializes in the design, fabrication, installation, and service of custom design signage. In April of 2020, Batten Brothers pivoted their business model and started to design and to manufacture a standing clear acrylic protective shield to be used at checkout counters, customer service desks, and anywhere person-to-person interaction occurs. To support COVID-19 relief efforts, a portion of the proceeds of each protective shield will be donated to both the Mass COVID-19 Relief Fund and Best Buddies, so really kudos to Batten Brothers. They were also part of Governor Baker's Manufacturing Emergency Response Team through the Mass MEP database. So we are honored to have Batten Brothers located here in Wakefield and all the outstanding work they have done for our community and the businesses that they have deeply affected by their COVID-19 impact and pivoting. Great job, Richard and your whole crew, so probably you've unmuted, I'm sure that the chair would love your words, Richard.
Sure, please, please say a few things. Oh, you have to unmute?
You have to unmute.
Hit the microphone. There you go.
Okay, I'm in, I think. Well, thank you very much. It's really, it's been our honor to be located in Wakefield in such a great town. You know, we've, we've been there for a long time and it's been, it's been wonderful and yeah, it's, we were grateful to be able to help the community and help, help businesses stay open, reopen, and do a very small, small thing that we could, you know, help people in this, this unusual year. So it was, our employees were phenomenal, they really stepped up. Everyone tried to, to practice safe, safe social distancing and we were able to stay open. So very grateful to the community, to our employees, our team. It was really, it was really, really good, and thank you so much for, for recognizing us, it's, it's really an honor.
Thank you so much. You're such a valued member to our community and have been around for so long, so it's so wonderful to see when people get the accolades that they deserve, so thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, did you want to say?
Yes, tonight we're all joined by Kim Ferrante, the owner of Carol's Cafe. And Carol's Cafe is located at 39 Tuttle Street. And unfortunately, although Carol's Cafe did not receive a Mass Econ Award, it did receive special recognition. Only one other company in Massachusetts besides Carol's Cafe received that recognition. So Carol's Cafe relocated from Everett to Wakefield in 2019. After building out their current space, they were finally able to open their doors on March 4th of 2020. Probably not a great day to open your doors in this, in this time. On March 17th, the governor banned eating at restaurants. So with the restaurant fully stocked with food, Kim pivoted and wanted to do something to help give back during these difficult times. Every day, Kim and her staff wake up at 2:30 a.m. in the morning to prepare meals to deliver our first responders, including hospitals, fire stations, National Guards Unit, police, nursing homes, you name it, they took care of these people. Not thinking about cost and time, Kim and her staff continue to support our first responders, and up to this day, they've delivered over 14,000 meals. I recommend you check out their Facebook page to see all the wonderful work they have done since the beginning of the pandemic, and more importantly, go down there and get a sandwich. We can get one, right?
Absolutely.
We're very lucky that Carol's Cafe is grateful to be their new home, so thank you.
Thank you.
And Kim, did you want to say anything or?
I just, I appreciate it, it was a great move, although it wasn't the greatest of times, but we pulled through and without a community like yours, we would have never been able to do so. You welcomed us with open arms and I'm greatly appreciated for that. I'm looking forward to continuing a very successful business for many years to come. And I just wanted to say thank you for everything and I hope you all get a chance to come down and check us out someday. And hopefully, we're looking forward to a great 2021.
Great, thank you so much, Kim.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I have checked you out more than once and you make a great gluten-free egg sandwich for my son. And being an Everett girl, I love the combination of Everett, Wakefield, so I think I've been in there when you or someone who works with you has been delivering tons of sandwiches to our first responders, and I remember that from when you first opened, so again, it's such, welcome to the community and you're already such an outstanding partner.
I really appreciate it, kind words and thank you so very much, and I'm glad your son likes the sandwiches.
He does, that's great, thank you.
I really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And also, Madam Chair, we might want to recognize that we do have Erin Kokindah here, our Economic Development Director. She's doing a fabulous job. We have John Stolminsky in the chamber and Chris Barrett from the chamber as well, so really great, you all joined us to support our business today, so thank you.
Thank you all so much. Do any councilors have any comments? At this point? Okay. Great, thank you again, so let's move on to item number six. Can I please have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from our last meeting, December 7th?
Don't move.
Moved by Paul. Seconded by Julie, any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, roll call vote for approval, myself, yes. Peter? Yes, Ed?
Yeah.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Julie?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so item number seven, we'll go right into the COVID-19 update. And Steve, send this to you or right to Ruth?
Why don't you send it right to Ruth? We all know that the, the numbers have been increasing statewide. And hopefully, tonight, we're going to talk more about part of the solution, so maybe first Ruth and then to Tom.
Sounds good, here you go, Ruth.
Thank you very much, everybody, for having me. Nice to see you all again. So let's start with the, we'll start with the bad news and then end with the good news, how's that? So the bad news is the number of cases of Wakefield residents are not good at all. There's no pattern, there's no super spreader, there's just an awful lot of people who are testing positive. So I I'd like to say, "Good job, Wakefield," but I can't because our numbers are just not, you know, we're getting 30 and 40 cases a day. It's not something we have the capacity to reach everybody every day. We have a lot of people doing contact tracing for Wakefield, but we are sending the majority of our cases to the Community Tracing Collaborative. So again, the person who contacts you may say they're from the Wakefield Health Department, or they may say they're from the Community Tracing Collaborative. They're legit and they're doing some of our cases for us. So I, you know, the end is in sight, I know that everybody is super tired of all this, I get it, I'm tired of it too. But people are very, very sick and people are still dying, and I don't mean to sound dramatic, but that's the case. And every one of those numbers, when you watch the news and it says, you know, how many people are sick, how many people in ICU, how many people have died. I know everybody feels that it's not going to be them or their loved one, but every one of those numbers is somebody's loved one who didn't think this would ever happen to them. I don't know how else to put it. So let's go on to some good news. The good news, I'm going to let Tom give some of it because he took care of the teacher testing for the school department, so I'm going to let him do that part. This week, we are doing first responders, fire and police, as well as some of the ambulance people. Tomorrow, we are doing a Vaccinate the Vaccinators clinic, and we have almost 100 people that will be vaccinating in preparation. We're doing this in conjunction with our Public Health Collaborative, so that's Malden, Medford, Melrose, Wakefield, Winchester, Stonem. It's only in order because I can remember three Ms, two W's, and an S. So so we're doing this as a group. There are approximately 800 first responders between the six communities, plus we've incorporated 100 for our vaccinators or workers, and what am I up to? Eight, nine, 300 for ambulance company employees. So those are the people who are being vaccinated this week. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Thursday, Medford is hosting, Friday, Malden is hosting, Saturday, Melrose is hosting. And we have 1,200 doses safely, very safely stored away, and we do not plan on wasting one single dose, we will use them all. And so that's good news, so that means on that infographic that the state has everywhere, and I have posted in front of my face at the office with Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3, that's first responders of the third bullet in the first phase, third out of six. After that is congregate care settings. That, that has started rolling out, not it's slow, it's with CVS and Walgreens, they all have contracts with one or the other. So that's going on right now, which is the fourth bullet. So then the next bullet that we'll start doing is home health workers, and then non-COVID-facing healthcare workers. Those include a lot of people who have been contacting me, like physical therapists who are in, you know, work for private companies, optometrists, there's a lot of people in that group. Phase 2 is when we start doing the public. And I know we say this every time, but you can go on to www.mass.gov, M-A-S-S dot gov, and if you type in, "When can I get vaccinated?" It'll bring you right to that section. Because again, we're getting a lot of calls from individual people and businesses, "When am I getting vaccinated?" So the big news, this is big, 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 big news, is the town has committed to the state that we will be doing public vaccination clinics. After we do first responders, we will be doing the rest of Phase 1, 2, and 3. It's a huge commitment. I'm really confident we can do it, we have a great team, and I know we can do it, so we are, we are standing up our old flu hotline number to be our COVID hotline number, and when it's up and running, I will give that number out because I'm sure you still don't have our handy-dandy magnets that we used to pass out. That will have, it's not going to be for messages, it'll be current information. So because we can't tell you what date we're going to start your group, we will give you the current information and remind you who's the next group. We literally made this decision Friday, and this week is 100% first responder vaccination. So next week, we will begin the planning, and it is massive planning. Tom and I will become BFFs, well, we're already BFFs. And we will start the process with our Incident Command Team to start flushing that out. Where, when, who, how, all that stuff. So I know there's a lot of people in the community who want to help with these clinics. We're going to need laypeople as well as healthcare providers. So just because you're not a nurse or an EMT doesn't mean we don't need your help, because we do. So we'll start that process and let everybody know when we're ready to ask for help and what we've got laid out, when the State Health Department is still figuring this out. They are going to be announcing, I don't, I don't think the governor announced it today, so, but they will, he will be announcing this week the four mass vaccination sites that will be set up in the state. The one closest to us, I guess I'm not supposed to say this, but I'm going to say it anyway, will be Topsfield. So there'll be one in Western Mass, Central Mass, Southeastern Mass, Northeastern Mass, which is Topsfield. So the next question I get is, you know, is it just going to be Wakefield, vaccinating Wakefield? And the answer to that will be no. People will always have the option to go to the mass vaccination site, and then there will be other venues to be announced, once, once they decide they're going to do it, of other venues that will be available. So this is I can't even begin to tell you how late-breaking this is, to the point where I don't have answers to your questions because I just told you everything that we know so far. But we absolutely will keep everybody we will communicate with everybody, we have great fortune of having a fabulous communications person. We'll be putting this out in every known vehicle short of smoke signals, including reverse 911 when it gets to, you know, general public-type people. So all I can do is say, "Keep watching our website, make sure you're signed up for reverse 911 calls." And we, we will let you know information as soon as we know information. So it's very exciting. It's something we, as a health department, have been planning for 15 years. We have a plan, we'll have to, you know, tweak it like we always have to tweak any new situation. And I'm really looking forward, I know I'm the health director, but I'm really looking forward to this. And I, I'm really looking forward to working with all different segments of the community who I know are just very anxious to get involved in this really, it's a historic thing. And I even took a picture of the UPS driver on Monday when he, when he brought the vaccine with a thumbs up. I know, I'm a public health nerd, proud of it. But we will, this is exciting, this is really positive and exciting, it doesn't mean people can let their guards down. It's a six-week process from the time you first get vaccinated till the time that you're fully immunized because you have, we'll be using the Moderna vaccine, so you get your second shot 28 days after the first shot, and then it takes two weeks to, for your immune system to fully ramp up. So even when you get your first shot, you still need to be careful, and I do not anticipate the state eliminating the mask order for quite some time. So we'll take pictures of our first responders at the clinic. Maybe we'll take a picture of Steve because he's helping out at the clinic, and away we go.
That's great, Ruth, thank you so much for that information. Before we take any questions, Tom, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, we've just been on the emergency management side, an assistant public health, we've been running, conducting testing for school department employees weekly, that's been pretty good. Positivity rate's been coming in at 3.4, 3.6%, so, which is pretty decent. But I can see that we can continue that for a few more weeks anyway, probably. We've also been getting some equipment in, we've ordered the freezer in for the, for the vaccine, and actually, we have a couple of parcels on some, we ordered some tents for the town also when we'd start doing things for outside. I believe this conduction on other vaccines will all be inside. But for anything that we do outside, that equipment will be coming as well. The rest of the town looks pretty good, we've been keeping people as safe as we can. CDC just come out a little thing, they're still, still asking people, because the numbers have escalated so much, "Please, just stay with the people that you live with," you know, "till we get this thing under control." And hopefully, people do a little more listening than, than not. But that's what we have right now, that's what I have.
Tom, do you want to just give the numbers? I know the first teacher testing, there were 110 people that were tested. I don't know what this past weekend was.
Yeah, this, this week was, first week was 110 with four positives. This week was 118 with four positives, but we also had two that they couldn't process. So it comes at 3.4 or something like that, so it, each week, I think, will get more as people get more comfortable in testing. Plus, it gives the teachers and staff a little bit a better idea of what's happening, they feel more confident to be able to test. So I think we'll see, you know, probably the numbers rise a little bit, and hopefully, the positivity rate goes down even more.
Thank you, Tom.
I can just say
Sure.
Of our team here, this is quite an undertaking, but they have a great track record of success. Blue Clinics, a lot of people have done that, we need to do, our number one thing is to keep our community safe, and it's all hands on deck, and we will get this done, so Tom and Ruth, what a fabulous job they have done and will do as we go forward, and again, anybody that, Ruth said she was looking for volunteers, so even taking names, I mean, you don't have to stick anybody with a name, you can't, but you can take names, you can move people along, so it's all hands on deck, so thank you, I just wanted to jump in, Madam Chair, sorry.
Great, no, not at all. I see some questions. We'll go Paul, then Jonathan, then Ed. Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to thank Ruth and Tom for a great presentation on giving us an update as to where we stand with the COVID crisis. Secondly, Ruth, please put my name on the list, I'm retired, I need something to do, I'm going crazy, so I'll
Email me.
I'm, I'm here to assist you, how's that?
Awesome. You bringing limonchella?
Excuse me?
Are you bringing limonchella?
Is that a request? We'll get to that later, Ruth. A question though regarding the 30 to 40 cases a day that you mentioned earlier, do you have an age range on who the 30 or 40 are? Is that asking too much?
No, not asking too much. I actually am working on a chart for you for the month of December that we'll put out this week that shows the ages of the people who were positive in December. And so I, you know, I like doing it by month, gives you a better range, it's, it's mostly 30 to 50-year-olds, but there's a lot in every single age group. So I'm working on that, and I will send it to Jen McDonald, and then she'll put that on the website.
I appreciate it, I was just curious whether or not it was real young or it was real old, but you're, you're saying that it's more middle to young, that's okay, very good, thank you very much for your answer, thank you very much. And don't forget to put me on the list.
Thanks, Paul. Jonathan?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Ruth and Tom, thank you so much, both for the update and for all the, the great work that you and, and your teams are doing. I know it's been, you know, a really exhaustive effort now for going on 10-plus months, and so really, you know, the fact that, you know, we continue to be impressed by the work that you're doing is just a testament to how, how lucky we are to have both of you. I, I just have one quick question on the vaccine piece, and given how sort of quickly moving this all is, I don't know is a perfectly acceptable answer, but any thoughts as to how as a community we'll be managing sort of the two-dose protocol for the vaccine? You know, one of the things, obviously, you know, you talked about the importance of not wasting any of the vaccine, which is, is absolutely true, and certainly, what we wouldn't want to do is have people get the first dose, not get the second dose, and effectively be unprotected and have wasted that, that first dose of the vaccine, so any thoughts, starting with the first responders in terms of
Okay, I actually have an answer for that. So first of all, if somebody only gets the first dose, they are partially protected. So this vaccine is, has a 95% record, but that includes two. If you only get one, you will still have some protection, but not 95%. So one of the cool things about this, these clinics is for the first time, we'll be doing paperless clinics, which is awesome. So there's a new software that we're using, and it does pretty much everything except wash the dishes. So one of the things it will do is send out an email to to you the day before you're supposed to be vaccinated and say, don't forget, you have an appointment at 2:06 tomorrow. And then it will also send a reminder. You know, we can send the whole list, a reminder to say, here's when the clinic is 28 days from now. It may or may not be in the same location. Here's the link. Please register for the second one. And then again, the day before reminds you, remember to come tomorrow and get your second shot.
Terrific. Well, thank you so much. Appreciate that. And again, really impressed with the, the thought and planning that's gone into all of this. I know it's no small endeavor. So thank you.
I forgot one little point. Sorry.
Sure.
So one part of this is we are able to get reimbursement for the administration. The vaccine is free. There are still some supplies we have to purchase and people we need to pay. So we'll, we'll be receiving $40.50 per person, both doses, $40.50, which will help defray some of the costs. Which is why we ask for everybody's health insurance information. If somebody has no health insurance, we're obviously still going to vaccinate them. But if you have insurance, we use it, they get billed. You have no copayment, zero.
Thanks, Ruth. Ed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ruth and Tom, I want to thank you both so much too for the, the COVID testing and Mr. Mayo as well. All of you kind of were incredibly instrumental in making that happen. And by, I think by any measure, it was an incredible success. It was well run. I think the, the lines were reasonable and the test results back were very fast. So that was, it was a great collaborative effort. So thank you to everyone on that piece. I know that happened a few weeks back. Ruth, I know that it's still early in this and it's kind of breaking news as you say. Because we're able to administer and, and be aside as you've described it, does that mean that there are certain, there's certain leverage that you have in terms of setting policies and protocols? Or is that all state, state mandated or otherwise?
State mandated.
And, and the reason I'm asking is because I, I know just, and obviously following the early reporting on this, it seems that a lot of, we are hearing a lot of instances where you know, dosages are being, are being discarded because of, you know, not having, for example, like people on standby or whatever the case is. So I, I'm assuming that we're not going to have those same sorts of issues based on, on our, our procedures?
Well, everybody has the issue because these are 10 dose vials. And once you puncture the membrane, you have six hours to use it. So the clinics are all set up in increments of 10. Which, you know, in a fantasy world, that would work great. And everybody who signed up said they would come and we would have those increments of 10. But in real life, somebody's not going to show up. So we will not waste any vaccine. We will find people's arms to put that vaccine in. It may not be that group cohort. But we will have people on standby. So that we're not wasting any doses.
And that's great. I think that's, I guess so important because, you know, all the stories you're hearing are how many doses are being wasted. Like you said, you puncture it, you've got, you're basically against the clock at that point and, and that would be
Our instructions are very clear from the state. Put it in somebody's arm.
And then with, with that too. Because we're hosting, does that in any way mean that, I think people will be interested, that Wakefield would be better positioned? In terms of, you know, when their phase, you know, it, it comes up or is called better positioned to be able to have better access? Do you expect as a result of, of you're, you're leading these efforts?
I, I believe that a lot of communities will be doing this and accepting it. I can't imagine too many mayors saying, oh, no, we're not going to do it. We'll let the state take it. Not a very good position to be in. So but you know, not everybody, I mean, not everybody is like us. Not everybody is Northeast Massachusetts. There's Western Mass. There's lots of parts where the entire health department is their three member unpaid board. That's the health department. So, you know, I, I, we're very parochial in Massachusetts. And we're even more parochial in Northeast Massachusetts. But not everybody has the same kind of health department.
And then finally, I know that you had mentioned about paperless, which I think is great. And I think it's going to be, be a great efficiency for so many people. My only concern and just, you know, to the extent you've thought about this already is some of our most vulnerable beings, some of our elderly populations who aren't using email necessarily. And I don't know if there's, you know, what kind of, you know, procedure you have in place for those folks, obviously as well, just to make sure that, you know.
We got a plan. We got a plan. We will be have, when it, when we get to that point, we will have a phone bank set up with volunteers. Including TTY. Including people with other languages. And there will be, we will do as much communication as we can to make sure that people who are not comfortable using a computer or have other barriers to just logging on to Prep Mod, they will be able to do it over the phone.
That's great. Well, I'll say, you know, from mask, you know, pickup to mask distribution to COVID testing now to this, I mean, you know, you've just been phenomenal in, in your response for our community. So just onward. Great work. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ed. Julie?
Thank you for everything you're doing. It's amazing. My family was touched by it and just seeing it from the other side. Incredible work. I just wanted to give a shout out. I mean, I know you kind of referred to the dashboard. That is an incredible tool. And I know you gave a nod to our communications team, but it, you've done a really good job. And I do encourage everybody to, to use that data. Because it's very reflective of what's happening in community. And I think it's going to be a great communications tool going forward as we move into this next phase. So that's all I wanted to say. Of course, we're all, I think for everybody, we're all here to help with whatever we can do. And you know, as you're looking for volunteers, I, I hope, you know, you'll tap some of us who might have different languages or, you know, different skills as well. So thanks.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Ruth. And, you know, as I said at the COVID meeting, as to take the stigma away, I tested positive last week after being sick. And the three adults in my family tested positive. We are pretty sure my father brought it into the house because frankly, some of those elderly people are not quite as careful, I think. Not to cast aspersions. I'm only casting aspersions against my father. He wears a mask. He tries to do his best. But, you know, I'm, I'm coming out of isolation now, moving into quarantine, you know, should be wrapping up quarantine. Isolating with two teenagers is horrible for anyone. That is the reason why you don't want to get this. But both teens have tested, have two negative tests after the appropriate time. So I feel lucky, but it really kicks, kicks you. I'm, my husband and I were not horribly sick, but pretty sick. And I'm still exhausted. It is, like you said, it's not a joke. It, it really takes the wind out of you. So you know, and we did everything right. I didn't host holidays. I didn't, I haven't gone out other than to do food shopping. So there's, there's no stigma to it. If you're not feeling well, really you have to go get tested because that's how you protect those around you and other people that you can be in contact with. So thank you. Working with the board with my own contact tracing was, was great. So both Tom and Ruth, thank you for everything you've done. We, we are so bloody lucky to have you. All right. Moving on, okay. Okay. Item number eight. I see Lieutenant Anderson there with regard to the traffic advisory recommendations. Joe, if you want to take it away?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. And hi, everybody. We just have two recommendations for the same intersection. Traffic advisory met in December and we received some complaints from some neighbors around the Nellie Street Plymouth Road area, which intersects with Broadway Street. They report several near miss crashes at that intersection. And it has no traffic controls present with Broadway Street being obviously the right of way. I assume that some of those near miss crashes may be from people trying to navigate their way around the current shutdown. At the railroad crossing, but if you do look at either end of that intersection, especially coming from Nellie Street, if you're unfamiliar with the area, it looks like Nellie Street continues on, but it's actually Plymouth Road and it obviously crosses Broadway Street. So I think probably less of an issue from the Plymouth roadside, but that, that intersection should be controlled on either side by stop signs. So after looking at it as a committee, we voted to present to a stop sign being installed on Nellie Street at Broadway and Plymouth Road at Broadway.
Great. Thanks so much, Lieutenant Anderson. And I will have, could I have a motion and a second? To follow the recommendations of the traffic advisory committee to place a stop sign at the intersection of Nellie Street and Broadway and another stop sign at the intersection of Plymouth Road and Broadway. Moved by Ed, seconded by Paul. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Myself, yes. Peter?
Yes.
Excellent. Ed?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Julie?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much, Joe.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Excellent. You as well. Item number nine, I'll move this to Steve, but it's the sale of the town owned land at 94 Butler Ave.
Yes, and I want to move it to Tom Mullen.
Okay. Sounds good. Tag, tag, you're it, Tom.
Madam Chair, members, I'm very pleased to say that as of last Wednesday, January 6th, the town is now the owner of 94 Butler Ave. As you know, this was a purchase that was accomplished in order to settle a lawsuit against the, the town. There were two documents that you have, you members of the council have signed. And the, the signatures came about in between meetings. So I'd appreciate it if we could have a, a vote. And I think a single vote would suffice for both to ratify and confirm first, the acceptance of deed, which you executed, which had to be recorded because a municipality can't accept land simply by having a deed come into the town. We have to have an acceptance. And second, the determination of uniqueness. As you know, this was not a situation where we went out and issued an RFP and sought proposals. Because there was only one piece of land in the world that would satisfy our unique needs here. And we acquired it for that reason, because it settled a lawsuit. So when you do that, that is when you avoid public bidding because of the uniqueness of the parcel you're purchasing. You have to make a formal written determination of uniqueness. And this board did. So I'd appreciate it if you could have a vote to ratify and confirm both the acceptance of deed and determination of uniqueness.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Are there any, before we take the vote, any questions for Tom? No. Okay. I need a motion and a second. One vote to ratify and confirm the acceptance of the deed and to establish the determination of uniqueness. Moved by Paul.
Seconded.
Seconded by Maureen. Roll call vote. Myself, yes. Peter?
Yes.
Yes. Excellent. Ed?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Julie?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Thanks a bunch, Tom.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, alrighty. Item number 10, fiscal year 2022 updates.
You know, it seems like it's always budget time around here. Except I think the month of July and August, we don't have to think about it too much. But in any event, one thing I'd like to, before I do a, a brief forecast, which is going to be very similar to the one we talked about in October at the tri board meeting is as we go forward with the budget presentations, we will get the actual budgets by department out to you a little bit earlier than they used to be. So you probably get more than a week to look at each department's budget. Any liaisons that you have to different departments, you may want to start having those conversations now with the department heads. I encourage it. Because they're starting to go forward on theirs. And I was thinking on the smaller departments, the administrative departments that you know, we'd have, you know, 10, 12 department heads there at at the town council meeting. And if you look at your gallery, it might kind of fill it up a little bit on Zoom. So I was thinking that in the, you know, in those more administrative departments, really the ones at town hall and what have you, that those department heads don't come unless there is a burning desire to have them there. Or we could get some questions if you had any done ahead of time. So I'd like to see if that's okay. First of all, I think the department heads would be very happy. But certainly the larger departments, police, fire, DPW, library, schools, you know, which doesn't report to us anyway technically. They would all be in. So I just want to make sure that there was no issue on that. If there is, we'll certainly get in whoever you want, but I think this may, may be a little bit crisper and be a little bit more manageable just because of the Zoom world we're in.
Steve, I think that's a great idea. We're, obviously we'll hear from the biggest budgets and the heads of those departments. If anyone has any questions for the smaller departments, they can absolutely reach out to the departments, reach out to you. If there's a need for someone to be brought in, we're not precluding that, but I do think it makes for a cleaner presentation. The really small budgets, we, we never typically have any questions for. You know, the small departments, I should say. Does anyone have any comments? On the council? No. All right. Sounds like a plan, people. Thanks, Steve. Now the forecast.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Now for the forecast. Ryan, if you could put that up, please, for me? Okay, so we're going to go through my kind of best guess at where we're gonna, where we're gonna end up in fiscal year 22, which starts on, on July 1st. You've seen a lot of this information before. It's very similar to the presentation that we made at the tri board meeting. However, we do have now six months worth of revenue that the town has, has taken in from July 1st to June 30th. We also have six month worth of state revenue to take in. So we do have a little bit more information to go by. And I will say that although, you know, I've been doing this for a long time. I think this is my 13th budget in, in this capacity. Kevin and I, Kevin Gill and I go through this. This is still one of the tougher ones to figure out. But we have a lot of good, solid areas of our budget. Items that are embedded in there. So there's a good foundation to work on. And Thursday night, the forecasting subcommittee, the finance committee will also meet to go through this to see you know, if, if they want to tweak this a little bit, but I think it's pretty much in line with what we discussed. Next slide, please, please, Ryan. So I always like to talk about where we are. And these figures all reflect after our November town meeting. So stabilization fund still has a little over 3 million in it. Sped stabilization fund has a half a million in it, which is very important. We put that in a few years ago. Free cash, about four and a half million. Reserve fund, which is what the finance committee uses. I think we have a number of seasoned finance committee veterans here. We haven't used any of that reserve fund yet, so that's still available. OPEB, 18 million. And water and sewer reserve, 1.8 million. And I think the council needs to bear in mind that as we went through this pandemic and we planned for it, when we did meet in October, we did talk about some of these reserves we were going to use as we smoothed this out. And this reflects that as well. Next slide, please. Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. So anyways, our reserves are well within our reserve policy. I think that's a good thing to think about. Is that we put this policy together and we want to keep free cash between 2 to 8% of our operating revenue. 2% would be around 2 million. We have four and a half million. So we're, we're healthy in there. I like to see that, always see it a little bit more, but not bad. Stabilization account, 3% of our operating revenue. That's right there. Reserve fund, half percent of our operating revenue. And that's pretty much right there too. So we're doing very well on that end. Next slide, please. So what we did think would happen over the next few years is that we would start to ratchet down a little bit on our free cash. And this was a slide that you saw at our tri board. down a little bit on our free cash, and this was a slide that you saw at our tri board meeting. And I think you do need to bear in mind that this, this is kind of a worst case scenario. This says that we spent, every department spent their entire budget and did not return anything to the general. We didn't receive any extra revenue. So this is kind of what I would say the bleakest look at everything as we go forward. And if that does happen, we still can see us in the upswing again. So that's a, that's a kind of a nice place to be in, and I think we're going to exceed those numbers. Next slide, please. So we talk about budget priorities, and I've asked you all for a few of those, and please, there's still time to to bring them in and let me, let me know. That's the last item down there. And this is on a municipal side, so we do know that we have the education of our, of our, of our students, which is something that the school department will talk about. So I'm not saying that that's not a priority. It's going to be a little over forty-five million of our budget next year, but there are other things that we need to look at. Public safety. I think that goes without saying, that's the most important thing that we do, is keep our public safe. Downtown project that is moving along, and I can, a lot of things are going to happen. We have a lot of momentum coming on that this year. Roads, sidewalks, and streetscapes. A number of you reached out to me about what can we do on our roads, and we did put that bond item together. Sidewalks, walkability is a big issue in town, and streetscapes. And by streetscapes, I mean really trees. We've planted a lot of trees this year. I will have Dennis give us an update as well, but more and more trees that are, we replaced a lot of trees that came down. We also have put in a lot more. And I think if you see in certain areas where some trees have gone in, you really can feel these neighborhoods starting to come back a little bit. Drainage is an issue that we look at. We're doing a big drainage job down in the Grafton Street area a few years ago. That'll help there. Capital improvements. Always an issue in capital, and we've done a pretty good job on that, suffered a little bit this last year, but we'll move forward. Recreation activities for all ages, that's something that a lot of you had talked to me about, kind of a little bit harder this year, but we have a lot of ideas. I think we're going to hit the ground running in in July with a lot more things. Sustainability and economic development. What can we do to help move our economy forward and help people downtown? And I think our businesses, and I think Aaron's done a great job hitting the ground running and not only helping them economically, but giving them some of the tools to help them expand their businesses. And that's going very well. Lake corner power, the water quality in the area around that is all always an issue. Pandemic rebound, I guess that's what we're going to be really talking, working on. Maybe that goes to sustainability and economic development as well. And also town council requests. There are certainly some items that people are going to request. Love to know them earlier rather than later, so we can figure out a way to fill them in each year. To jump back to the public safety issue for a minute. With this pandemic, we've seen an uptick lately in some domestic areas, mental health areas. So that is an area that I'm very proud of everything this community has done and how we've moved that forward. You're probably going to see in this current budget round, looking at increasing some of those clinician hours and working with some of our providers there to help in this area. This is very important, so might be looking there. The other item on public safety is we are seeing some of these larger, higher buildings, so we might be looking at making sure our first responders in the fire department are safe as well. Next slide, please. So what do I know right now? And what am I forecasting for next year? Well, I do know that the tax levy will be seventy-nine million, three hundred and twenty-two dollars. And I know that because I know what this year's tax levy is. It's an easy equation. Okay? State aid, I am putting it in for the forecast at about eleven point three million dollars. And when I go into my uncertainties at a few slides down the road, that'll be one of them. Local receipts, six point eight seven five million right now. That's another one that I am a little bit unsure of, but we'll go, we'll talk that through in a few minutes. Municipal light department, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand. That is an agreement that they made with the finance committee years ago. We're still on that. That's their payment in lieu of taxes. Free cash and available funds, one point two five million. I will tell you, last year we used two point two five million. So I'm very happy that we've ratcheted that down a little bit by making some other systemic changes here. New growth. Now, new growth is always a timing issue. This is a very robust new growth number, but I believe that this will include the improvements to the National Grid transfer station on Montrose Ave that have been completed, have been there for a year. We should see some robust new growth from that area. Lines in the ground as well, but that is a big issue. And then we have the big issue of federal relief. Will there be more federal relief? I particularly think there will be. We're not anticipating it for this issue here, but I do think there's going to be more of those programs coming forward for next year. I think with the Biden administration, I think there will be another package. The latest package that just came out, the second relief package, did not include any money for cities and towns per se. So that's something that we'd be looking for. So we total revenue of one point, a little over one point two million. Next slide, please. Thank you. So where does this all go? Operating budgets will be around seventy million. That is assuming that there is a roughly a four-point increase in the education portion and bringing down the rest of the town, towns departments at three percent or under. And I'll tell you that the first round of budgets I'm going to give you bring those town departments in at about one point three six percent. So we're looking at everything we can there to keep those things down. Fixed costs, and we'll talk about those a little bit later. Those include group insurance, includes vocational school, includes retirement. That's coming in at a little bit more than last year as well, probably about three percent or so. Capital, that's one item that we talked about in October. We cut capital to one million dollars in last fiscal year. We are committed, at least at this point, to ratcheting that back up to two million dollars. So that was one of the first areas we were going to look at. Articles, which are mainly refuse, are pretty flat, around two point three million. Debt service, pretty flat, around two point seven million. Stabilization, we talked about maybe keeping that going and starting to add some more money into that again. Overlay account is what Victor uses to, you know, handle any abatement applications and what have you, and he's done a very good job managing that as, as the Board of Assessors. State and county assessments, the majority of that is charter schools. That's money we get assessed from the state. Cherry sheet offsets, which is basically dedicated library funds, that's actually gone up a little bit, so fifty, I'll keep that at fifty-one million, fifty-one thousand dollars there. Snow and ice overdraft, we never know, but so far, not so bad. And will there be a continuation of COVID costs? There definitely will. Will there be some help with that? So kind of a big, you know, thirty thousand foot picture, if you could take the next slide, please. Looking at about a forty-seven thousand dollar deficit in a forecast model right now. I will tell you that I am thrilled with with that. When I put the numbers together and then Kevin does it his way and I do it my way, I come in, you know, in this area, I am absolutely thrilled from a forecast model. This is not anything that I'm really all that nervous about if things pan out. But let's now, let's talk about the budget uncertainties. Next slide, please. So state aid, and we'll talk about these in length after this. Local receipts, health insurance, school priorities, snow and ice, and federal policy. So these are three or six items that I am thinking that we're going to have to really worry about a little bit as we go forward. So next slide, please. So as the council may recall, the 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 state legislation legislators and Governor Baker level funded state aid from fiscal year twenty to fiscal year twenty-one, ostensibly level funded it at ten point seven six six percent. When we met in October with the finance committee, and when we met at the tri board meeting, there was a feeling that, you know, there would be a rebound in the state and that we would have an increase to eleven point two nine two percent. So that kind of, I held that for for our purposes today, okay, for for my forecast. And I was a little bit nervous doing that, but then if you look at where the state is year to date, the state year to date, so from July first to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty, has actually seen an increase in revenue of two point seven percent over last year, about three hundred and seventy-two hundred million dollars. To me, that was pleasantly surprised. It 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 did show that they were down thirty-one percent in meals tax levy, and we'll talk about our meals tax, too. But I was pleasantly surprised on that because Governor Baker has said over every year, he will increase unrestricted local aid at the same level that the state aid has increased as a minimum. So that kind of gets us halfway there with the increase. The other item is chapter seventy. We are still being promised this big bump in chapter seventy, and even as late as November and early December, some of our state delegation was saying, well, you know, you still might see a bump in chapter seventy-eight. So if we got a little bit of a bump, we would be, we would be great, right? We'd be right in that, in that level right there. If we got a modest bump, I'm not all that concerned. I think the numbers aren't as as horrible as I had thought back in July, so I'm feeling a little better. And federal assistance, we don't know. So state aid, although it is increasing, it's not out of the ballpark. Next slide, please, Ryan. Local receipts. Now, local receipts has been something that we've really had done very well with over the years. And in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, our fiscal year right now, we ratcheted that number down because what has happened out there, and we're experiencing around eight million a year in local receipts, and we ratcheted that down to six point two five million. And then for fiscal year twenty-two, we did see a ten percent, seeing a ten percent increase, thinking the economy would pick up, and that's going to start in July, and maybe all the vaccinations will kick in by then, and we'll be in a, we'll be in a good shape to increase to go by that. But I did look at this year to date data. What we didn't have before was we didn't have six months. So year to date, we have collected as a community, little over two and a half million in local receipts. Big part of local receipts is excise tax and automobiles, and that always comes in the spring. So we're expecting a three million dollar commitment in the spring. We collected a little bit in the first half of the year, about five hundred thousand. So if you were to take, subtract that five hundred thousand from the two point five that we have collected, double that, so double that to that before, and then add the three, we'd be right at around seven million dollars for this fiscal year. I think that would be great. Because a lot of other things are coming in, okay. One thing that did not come in as good as we would have liked is the hotel tax. The hotel hotel tax in in two thousand nineteen at this point was about three hundred and fifty thousand. This year came in at a hundred and forty. So that's a big drop in the hotel tax. Meals tax, however, I was pleasantly surprised that that came in at a hundred and sixty-seven thousand this year. And last year, it was, it was only a little bit more than that. So I thought meals tax, we really held our own. So I think that that was a hundred and eighty-six last year. So that was pretty great. Think people did embrace the outdoor dining. Think people did embrace takeout. Kudos to, I know the counselors did a lot of Facebook messaging and things like that, saying support our local restaurants. And I think that actually worked out pretty well in that event. And I think some of them did really great outdoors. We're also seeing a pretty good revenue in building. A lot of people are doing home improvements. So although we haven't seen any big projects coming in that are new with big building fees, we are seeing a lot of, you know, home improvements going on, and that does help. Next slide, please. So health insurance. Maybe Jonathan will have some words of wisdom here where he's in the, in the industry. I am increasing this line item by three percent or three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Last few years, we've pretty well been level funding our health insurance. But I'm hearing some rumblings that there may be some increase in costs at the GIC this year, probably because of everything that's happened with the pandemic, although I thought health insurance companies were actually probably doing pretty good because they weren't paying for a lot of things. But maybe that's, maybe that was just in the beginning. So that is a little bit more of an increase than I'd like. And if it were to increase that, I think it's important to remember that we may have to look at using some of our OPEB money, which is embedded in the budget at one point eight million. So maybe we put one point six million into OPEB and use two hundred for operations. We have some wiggle room there if we needed to. Next slide, please. Schools. So I'm in constant communication with the superintendent. We talk almost every day and at length about corroborating odd items and how how we're doing, how he's how he's doing. And really, one of our biggest questions lately is what will education look like in two thousand twenty-two? I mean, there are some learning loss issues, and I give kudos to Wakefield Public Schools, going for the hybrid model and getting these kids back in school as long as they can. But there are some times that they can't. The realities are that because of staffing that maybe is 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 ill or too many kids are out because of what have you, and it's more like they're not sick, but they're quarantined from being in contact with other people, that there are some learning loss issues that we might be looking at next year. Conversely, on that, there are some students that are, and Doug and I talk about this, that are on IEPs that have simply thrived with with a remote learning. So we may see not only summer school costs to help out with some learning loss issues or extra schooling next year to help out with that, but a continuation of remote for some students. And, you know, this year, Doug had to hire sixteen more additional remote positions in fiscal year twenty-one to cover that. So that, how does that all flush through is is an interesting item. Are there additional funds coming through? And there are additional funds coming through for education in the second CARES bill, and I think there will be more in the third CARES bill that we'll look at to plug some of those gaps. Will there be more special education costs, as I talked about it? And as the council will recall, when someone who does no longer works for a municipality is let go, we get a direct unemployment cost. So there may be not a call for some of these remote teachers or positions anymore. Maybe they only need eight, not not sixteen. So if eight are going on unemployment or leaving, although I bet they'll get picked up elsewhere, there may be a cost there to us. So those are some things we're going to look at, look at. Snow and ice, I only have one word to say. If you want to change it, change the slide, Ryan. Prayer. I am praying for good weather. I'm praying for nice, warm weather. I love when it snows because Councilman Dombrowski texts me and puts dollar signs in the text. So thanks a lot. There was a FinCon member years ago who used to say, the good, the good Lord brought it, let the good Lord take it away. He was always against plowing. I don't think we have that that option today, but that's something we do. But I'm hoping for a nice winter. It'd be great to have some snow and ice money that goes back to the general fund instead of having an overdraft, and we were lucky last year, and hopefully we'll be lucky this year. And we've also increased that budget. So it's not two hundred thousand anymore, it's eight fifty embedded. So we got a ways to go there. Next slide, please, Ryan. So federal policy, there is certainly an expectation of another stimulus package. That is everything we're hearing out of here. FEMA. FEMA is an interesting concept right now, is that in utilizing the CARES Act and utilizing FEMA, the state is really wants us to, you know, use the CARES money for the quarter local match on FEMA. So if you think if it, if something qualifies for FEMA, and not everything does, but if something does, the state wants us to use a quarter of that for, out of the CARES, which is great because it extends our CARES money, and we're allotted two point four million as a community. And then we put it on FEMA. The problem with FEMA right now is that FEMA is, isn't just handling like one state or two states and one very, you know, small of what small event, but a, an event that had a beginning and an end, like you had a hurricane, you had a snowstorm, what have you. They know, and then they go and they reimburse. This is pervasive. So, you know, we have a number of FEMA submissions in that we haven't received money yet for, and it's about seven hundred thousand dollars. We will get it. I just hope it comes in in this fiscal year, and I expect that it will. And I, and if it doesn't, I'm sure that the Department of Revenue will make some, some allowances for us. As far as CARES is concerned, and this is, it it earlier was that we had to spend everything by December thirtieth, two thousand twenty. We all knew that was going to get extended, and it did. Right now, we probably have, that we have not that we have not requested yet from the CARES funds, about nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I would expect more of that. We will, we'll certainly get up and do that very shortly. And we have a lot more FEMA money coming in. So I'm pretty confident we're going to be very good this year in handling all of that this fiscal year. And the school department has been great about, and we've been great about working, particularly Tom Walsh, making sure that we go after every single uh earmarked or grant opportunity that are covering certain things, particularly in the area of education. So they have this E S S E R grant uh or a bucket of money. So if you got half a million from that, you know, that would be, you wouldn't have to go after your CARES money. You can get it, so it's it's supplementing that. I will tell you, in talking to some of my compadres, they haven't been as good about jumping in on these things. And kudos to Doug, kudos to Tom um and Kevin Gill for really working and pulling this all together. So I guess the bottom line is, um I am confident as I can be going forward, that we will be able to continue moving forward with our budgets, continuing to um, you know, increase the services to the people of Wakefield within two and a half and really um consistently as we put out in um in October uh with the tri board. So with that, Madam Chair, um I feel pretty confident, and hopefully I can answer any questions. You can probably take that down, Ryan.
Steve, thanks very much. Do any members of the council have any questions for Steve? Jonathan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Steve. No real questions, just wanted to make a couple of comments. First, Steve, since you you did mention me in the context of health insurance, you know, one thing that I I want to again recognize, Steve, you and and your team, for Amy Forziani in particular, i- is the fact that year over year, we've actually seen uh pretty small or even some cases decreases in health insurance costs, which just by way of context is so foreign to anyone else who runs a business that's buying health insurance for their employees. You know, the fact that we're looking at potentially a three percent increase in health insurance costs is as kind of a setback is is really extraordinary, so.
I'm upset about it. I'm upset about it.
Well, yeah, and I, you know, I can tell you again, for a lot of employers, I mean, for the the company that I work for, I mean, if we get away with spending three percent more on health insurance for our employees every year, that's a, that's a good year. So I I really do want to thank you, Steve, and and again, Amy Forziani as well, for uh really excellent work there. I um I I have to say, my my other comment is, um, you know, kind of thinking about this year, I I had a lot of anxiety, and I still do, about both sort of state aid and local receipts. But um, you know, given the trends that you mentioned, Steve, and some of the numbers we've seen, I I have been kind of pleasantly surprised at how well those numbers are are coming in during the course of the year. And, you know, it's it's been hard to find sort of good news over the last, uh, you know, nine months in in the time of COVID. But um, you know, it does seem that we're avoiding some of the worst-case scenarios, at least in the near term, that we had thought about in the spring, like, you know, ten percent reductions in local aid and things like that. So um encouraged by those numbers. I know there's a long way to go until we get to fiscal twenty twenty-two and certainly through that year. But um, you know, definitely, um, you know, some positive indicators and some signs that are moving in the right direction.
Thanks, Jonathan. Does anyone else have any um comments or questions? Maureen.
Thank you. I can't find my little handsome boy. My uh Zoom. So thank you so much for doing that, Steve. I just, one little edit as you're using these slides going forward. When you list the priorities and public safety as it should be listed first, you really talked about public health in that bullet too. And so I'm just going to ask you to say public safety and health, because I think what you talked about, which is something a few of us have been talking for a while about, you know, better mental health services or social services that are for individuals not in the school system and that are, you know, council of aging, all of us that are in the middle there. And um I said pandemic should be its own bucket, but I think public health really falls in that public safety category. So just a a minor edit, but no typos. Loved, loved the presence. Love the whole, I was not Anne, I did not find any typos in it, but I really appreciated it. And I know how hard it is to kind of come up with, you know, money predictions, not knowing what this world looks like. But thank you for those priorities. And yes, I know some of us owe you emails about what our priorities are and um looking forward to talking to the liaison groups and and hearing what some of them are thinking.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, Maureen. Ed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll I'll say, Steve, thank you for the presentation. And um having worked with you on on the COVID piece, you know, from the beginning, I want to really credit you for um being able to recognize where the needs were and being confident that we'd have the the funding stay from the CARES Act or any other resources to make sure that we we've been able to really be a leader during a during a pandemic. And in a lot of ways, I think we've we've done just that. And you know, you've been confident about the reimbursements. All projections look to be that um we're we're going to be landing where we need to. And during these last, you know, ten-plus months, we've we've been able to provide a lot to the residents of this town, you know, as a result of that, you know, from the, you know, from the hotel rooms that we had, you know, for to be able to quarantine people as needed, to obviously the ma- the mass distribution, to uh to testing, to everything else, to the hours that that Tom Walsh has been spending in addition. And I think it's been time well spent, but it's also been very strategic the way you've done it. So I thank you for that. And I think that will um, you know, show um a real, a real re- return. I think it'll, it's going to pay great dividends. It already is to to the health and safety of our community, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Ed.
Thanks, Ed. Any other comments? Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Steve. That was great, as always.
A moving work in progress. So we'll um, we'll take it from there.
Absolutely. Item number eleven is the emergency fund update. I know Steve has a a brief update on that.
Yeah, very, very brief. You know, the emergency fund was a, is a great uh tool that we've done, and it's all handled by donations and by um by donations. And we have helped, you know, twenty-five-plus citizens of Wakefield, the resident citizens of Wakefield since this pandemic began. The last, most recent being the four that um are related to the pandemic, I guess, but on the Chestnut Street fire that happened, four people were displaced. So we've been helping them. But that fund is starting to deplete. So this is really a plea to the community that, for those of you that can, you know, uh, we have a little bit over thirteen thousand dollars in this account right now. Um and I'll tell you that um part and parcel is that, is that because we did actually get some FEMA money that replenished it because of, you know, hey, this was a a an issue of the pandemic. So I I'm really just asking the community if they can, and I know it's hard. You know, emergency fund, the food pantry, you know, digging deep for these, it really can help. So I really just wanted to put that out there, and we don't talk about it a lot. You know, uh, the the people that are, you know, that are using this and that are calling in on it, and I've had some lovely, lovely conversations with people of all walks of life. It's not a huge amount, it's a thousand dollars, you know, it's a one-time, one-time hit, but it really makes a difference. And uh I know I meet with them, I know a lot of them come through the port hole and and converse with um Sherri, and she talks to them. They are really, um, they really need it, they're very grateful. You know, it's it's just, it just means a lot to help them just take the edge off. So anybody who can in the community out there, um, you know, and even, you know, ten dollars, twenty dollars, they'll all add up. So that and the food pantry. Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted, just to get a little plug for that, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Steve. It is, your hand still up or? Okay, got it. Moving on to item number twelve, which is a license application. We um have a motion in a second to reaffirm the change of manager for OAS doing businesses Feng's nine sixty-three Main Street to Sarah Boyle. The vote was taken at the November twenty-third, two thousand twenty meeting as requested by the A B C C for discrepancy on the application that the applicant submitted. Steve, can you just, are we even taking a new vote?
If you just would, I think we just need reaffirm reaffirm the entire um light uh change of manager, and it's because they did not include DBA Feng's on there, one of the things that they put in. All it is, is reaffirming our vote, or reaffirming the change of manager. And then it should be all set, we think.
Great. So if we can have a motion in a second um to reaffirm the change of manager for OAS as noted in the agenda.
Oh, moved.
Moved by Paul.
Seconded.
Seconded by Jonathan, roll call, vote, myself, yes. Ed.
Yeah.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Maureen.
Yes.
Julie.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
And Paul.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Item number thirteen is, and this is also brief, because it's just a, I want to bring it to the board's attention and then ask maybe um, you know, at another meeting, if folks want to try to have a discussion. So Mystic Valley Charter School, the paper reported that there were some further concerns this summer. And everything that happened this summer with the pandemic, I think I, you know, with everything, got buried a little bit. But there were some more concerns about um administration at the Mystic Valley Charter, lack of transparency, um, issues with regard to potentially again, um discrimination, not the same issues that happened a few years ago, but i- it was raised by the NAACP. That enough is, that concerns me enough. But as long as I've been on this board, we have asked the charter school to come before us to just have a conversation, transparency of their budget. We give them, Steve, what's the number, like seven thousand, seven mil- um hundred thousand?
Oh, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. We give them money in four years, have asked not for a detailed accounting, but simply for them to come to the um table and for us to ask some questions, because there has been concerns over the years. When we asked the VOKE to do this, they did it very willingly. Our old, our own school um committee certainly does this, school board. So I just want to get the, you know, the temperature of the council simply for us to to invite administration, that someone to represent the the school board of the Mystic Valley Charter, just so we can find out where our money, you know, that we're comfortable with the money we're giving. They have never responded in eight years that I've been on this board. Steve, am I right on that or wrong? Never responded, let alone come and had an uncomfortable situ- uh conversation. We have tried to get the state legislature involved. I remember having um when Paul Broder was a rep and Donald and even Jason Lewis to say, you know, what can we do? This money, we don't have control over um saying or holding it back. But I still think I'd like to try to have someone from the charter school come and answer questions we have. I don't know what the council thinks. Any, Jonathan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I I wholeheartedly agree. I mean, I I think um, you know, a- any partner of ours that we have in terms of educating children in Wakefield, I I think that there is a certain um sort of courtesy that I would expect in terms of transparency and cooperation, you know, with our community. And as as you've pointed out, you know, the Northeast Vocational School has has been a great partner in doing that, and I'd love to see that replicated. You know, I I think when you sort of combine the lack of transparency, you know, with the allegations of racial insensitivity and bias of the school, you know, with the fact that there's been this sort of sense that uh, you know, it's, they're they're pretty quick to let students sort of wash out the school if they're not meeting expectations, which I I think is, runs pretty contrary to the way that uh the Wakefield Public Schools operate in terms of meeting our students where they are and working to make sure that, you know, every student has uh the ability to uh, you know, to achieve and to to grow. I I I think there are a lot of questions there that um, you know, we as a, as a board, and I think, you know, we as a larger community in Wakefield, you know, uh, you know, deserve the right to hear some answers to and deserve the right to have a dialogue uh about, so that we can make, we can make sure that, you know, this is a partnership that does meet the interests of of our children here.
Thank you. Um, any other questions or comments? Um, so I think maybe I'll talk to Steve about seeing, you know, what the what the best way to do this. And and I'm not suggesting that they have done anything wrong. I'm suggesting that uh issues have been raised, which I believe we we have every right to ask about, but just the transparency issue, because it is such, as Jonathan put it perfectly, they are a partner in educating our children. We give an awful lot of money that is money that's coming from our public schools. So um I think just hearing what they're doing is is also um would be a good, um, good thing for us to do as a, as a council.
And give it some content. There are sixty-six Wakefield um students in the Mystic Valley Charter School, according to the superintendent.
Yeah.
So it is.
It's a good number of students. Great. All right, thank you. I'll I'll work with Steve on that. Item number fourteen, gift expense acceptance. There was a request from the library to accept and expend a gift in the amount of a hundred and one dollars ninety-five cents from various donors with thanks. Do I have a motion in a second?
Oh, moved.
So moved by Paul, seconded by Ed, roll call, myself, yes. Ed.
Yeah.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Maureen.
Yes.
Julie.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
And Paul.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. So ordered. Warrants. Jonathan, can you give the exciting report on warrants that you signed?
Uh, it is very exciting. So on, sorry, I have to look at my notes, which I'm having trouble reading. Uh, on December twenty-third of last year, I did sidebar at sixteen through twenty-four, the details of which are in the packet. The total spending for general expenditures was twenty-seven point nine million, plus an additional thirteen million or so uh in payroll. Details are in the packet, uh, you know, nothing that was extraordinary or unusual, but happy to answer any questions that folks have.
Thanks, Jonathan. Seeing no questions, I will move on to um, excuse me. Item number sixteen, matters not anticipated for this agenda. Do we have any folks who want to bring anything up? Really? Oh, there we go, Jonathan.
Couldn't have expected that to last.
No, I I didn't expect it to last. I was, it was close.
So not not necessarily matters not anticipated, but a a couple of announcements
Sure.
and and recognitions. First, just actually an update um following, I believe, our last meeting in December. It's been a while now. But when the Albion Cultural Exchange Board presented to uh to the town council, there were a number of questions around uh the the rear door, the ABA accessible entrance that was being planned for the the back of the building on the Chestnut Street side, uh, and a suggestion that uh the ACE board coordinate with the Commission on Disability Issues. They have been in touch. There were member, members of the ACE board did attend one of the CDI uh meetings, uh, and they spent a fair amount of time talking through uh the tentative plans for the uh, the the rear accessible door and did get some good feedback from from the CDI, but also got their support for that approach. Uh, I I think they, you know, both both committees agreed that it was sort of the right next steps in terms of bringing accessibility to the building uh in the near term. Uh, and um, you know, we're we're comfortable with that approach. So just wanted to make sure the council was aware of the the follow-up there. Uh, that's still a little bit of a ways off. You'll remember, we were meeting primarily about the uh, the outdoor sign. That is moving ahead, and I believe that's going uh in front of the zoning board of appeals this week. A couple of other uh quick announcements. Uh, I did want to mention a couple of additional organizations and businesses and groups in Wakefield that were recognized over the last couple of weeks. In addition to the great work of Carol's Cafe and Baton Brothers, there were several businesses and organizations in town that received citations from the state legislature just in the last couple of weeks. Wakefield Farmers Market was one for for their great work in keeping the farmers market open and adapting uh to the pandemic. The Sweet Bay Shop uh was recognized for their new location on Main Street, which I know many of us probably visited during the holidays and uh really an extraordinary location and glad uh that they've been able to expand successfully. Voltage Boutique uh was congratulated on their grand opening. Publication was uh received a citation celebrating their three years uh in business. I can't believe. Publication was received a citation celebrating their three years in business. I can't believe it's been three years already for them. And then finally, the Wakefield High School Golf and Boys Cross Country teams received legislative citations for their undefeated seasons. And so congratulations to those teams, those businesses. And of course, you know, the beloved farmer's market for the great work they do. Also, thanks to State Representative Lippard Garabedian for spearheading these recognitions and, you know, going throughout town over the last couple of weeks and delivering these in person. Finally, just from a standpoint of folks interested in getting involved in local government and local affairs, we have both a number of appointed board and commission positions that are due to be filled later this spring. And thank you to Clerk Dalton for circulating that information and getting that out on the public website. Applications for those appointed positions are due over the next couple of weeks. But it also is time for folks who are interested in running for elected seats on different boards and commissions in town. Town elections are in April and just wanted to remind folks that for anyone who's interested in running, nomination papers are available in the town clerk's office between now and I believe May 5th, if I have that date correctly. That's all for me.
Thanks, Jonathan. And I should have, thank you for noting that it's not just matters not anticipated, it's also announcements. Does anyone else have any announcements? No. Okay. Ed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, I just wanted to remind all of our local small businesses that the second round of PPP funding is out there starting today. Applications, you know, are being accepted on a somewhat limited basis, and that will be expanded. But if you reach out to our community and Economic Development Director, Kokinda, or also John Smolinski at the Chamber, those would be two really good resources that will help you to walk through the process. And those are really important programs that can really have a tremendous impact on on your business during a very difficult time. So please reach out to them or I think we may even have information on our website on that, if I'm not mistaken. I also wanted to recognize our Wakefield Police Department. Saturday was National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. And there are really 364 other days that we should be appreciative of our Wakefield Police Department. They do a tremendous job in keeping our our community safe and healthy and secure. And so I just want to, again, thank them for their tremendous work every day. Their dedication and their commitment to excellence, it does not go unnoticed by any of us. So I want to thank them for that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Ed. And along that same vein, I was very happy with Maureen and Steve was there as well to welcome three new members to the Wakefield Police Department, which was great to see, great to see their families all, early December, all socially distanced and masked we were. But that was, you know, we're adding some excellent folks to an already excellent department. Julie?
Um, I just also want to remind people that the MLK and Coretta Scott Day celebration is happening on Monday in recognition of service, I think it's in recognition of compassionate action in town. And in addition to just some sure amazing words, and I believe the students are doing some artwork, there will be a panel with the winners. I think Maureen is probably moderating. So I think that's going to be really interesting. Looks like it's going to be on Facebook Live. Find here. So go, so go to, I guess, go to the Wakefield Human Rights page on our website and there's more information. That is Monday. The other thing I just wanted to mention is that the Lake Department met last week and probably something that most people will never notice, but if you are going by the Wakefield Avenue substation, they have completely redone it. And it's pretty phenomenal. If you kind of remember it from, from the past, they did it all in-house, on time, on budget, and they're very proud of it. And I have to say, it's quite impressive. So taking a walk by Wakefield Ave, take a look at the new substation.
Great. Thanks, Julie. Any other announcements? No? Okay. I just, before I pass it off to Steve and/or Tom, if they want anything to say, I just wanted to note the passing of two members of our community who volunteered for many years giving back, one being Chris Fowler and the other being Gil McCarthy. Stacy Constance, who's a good friend of mine, who's been on some committees, has was reminding me that Chris was a very active member of the Charter Commission when we had that last year. So you know, thanks to both of them for always giving back to Wakefield and also sincere condolences and love out to their families with their loss. Steve, do you have any?
No, other than it's nice to see you all again. I haven't seen you. Happy New Year.
Excellent. Tom, are you good?
Yeah, all set. Thank you.
Awesome. All right. Well, thank you all. Happy New Year. Here's to 2021, hopefully being a little bit better than 2020. If I could have a motion in a second to adjourn.
Oh, moved.
Moved by Ed?
Second.
Seconded by Jonathan. And our next meeting for those watching is Monday, January 25th. Motion for adjournment, myself. Yes, Ed.
Yeah.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And Paul?
Yes.
Great. Thank you all. Thanks, Sherri. Thank you, WCAT. And I hope you all have a wonderful week. Take care.